The Administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Stigumire?
Here.
Ms. Hartz?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Tupper?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Waits?
And Ms. James?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. I will briefly review the meeting format today. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The Administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items shall approve -- shall include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The Administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
Your Consent Agenda this evening consists of the approval of the May 1st, 2017 minutes, the following annexation comprehensive plan map amendments and zoning map amendments, which are items 2 through 7, which consist of 1701 Busby Street, number 3, 242 9 McKinley Street, and 2429 McKinley Street. Item number 4, 160 Golf View Bend, 169 Golf View Bend, 190 Golf View Bend. Item number 5, which has many addresses, as indicated in the -- on the agenda, which are all on Golf View Bend, as well as Turnwall Lane. Item number 6, which is 803 Skyland Drive, and 150 Bluff Road, 152 Bluff Road, 154 Bluff Road, 154A, 156, 160, 164, and Bluff Road, as well as 1003, 1007, and 1011 Hammerick Street, which was number 7 on the agenda. Two site plan reviews consisting of number 8 on your agenda, 854 Galloway Lane, and item number 9, 1115 and 1087 Shop Road, as well as two subdivision plat reviews, which are items number 10 and 11 on the agenda, and they consist of 2082 Heath's Lane and the intersection of Riding Grove Road and Wood Creek Farms Road, which is number 11 on your agenda.
Thank you. Are there any Commission members or guests today who wish to have items on the Consent Agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to approve the Consent Agenda along with the May 1st, 2017 minutes.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. There's a few recusals for one of the items. Do you want to recuse those members that need to recuse before the vote?
Yes. What item, so that was?
I'm also recusing from item number 8.
April, could you restate your...
If she could make a -- what would -- if they're both recusing from number 8, what would be great is if Ms. James could make -- rephrase her motion to include everything except -- or everything -- let me think.
And then we'll do a separate motion.
If she could do number 8 separately, and then you could all do all the rest of them together.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the May 1st, 2017 minutes and the Consent Agenda excluding number 8.
That's fine.
Do I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Now we will go back. We don't have to go back, do we?
No, so there was a motion for everything except number 8. Now someone needs to...
Now I need a motion.
You need to ask for a motion for number 8 with the two people recusing themselves.
Okay. I have a motion, please, for number 8.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 8 on the Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved. We'll now continue with the regular agenda.
Item number 12 on your regular agenda consists of a zoning map amendment for 2314 Pinehurst Road. It is a request to rezone the parcel from a single-family residential district RS2 to a general residential district RG2. And Mr. Cook is here. If you have any questions from a zoning perspective within your case summary, there is an analysis of what the current zoning allows and what the proposed zoning allows, and you have a table as the last attachment that -- so you can compare the different uses that are currently allowed and what if you and City Council were to approve this rezoning, what would potentially be approvable with the new zoning.
Are there any questions for staff from the Commission? If not, would the app...
The applicant is here.
Would the applicant like to come forward, please?
First of all, I want to say good evening. Won't be here long. I just want to -- Anthony Lawrence with Brownstone. We've been working on this project with TN Development for the past year, year and a half. All the information specific to the project is included in the packages that have been presented to you. I do want to make mention that the client, our client, TN Development, has extended a memorandum of understanding to the neighborhood with specifics as to what will be in the project as presented. There is, at this point, no means to change what has been put into the MOU, and I think...
Did you -- was that included in the packages, John? The MOU? No.
It wasn't? Okay. Real briefly here, the MOU in summary states that this MOU will confirm TNDC's desire to master plan and build the senior living complex on 3.69 acre site. As stated in the previous TNDC letter dated February 16th, 2017, we agree to do the following. There are five items. Number 1, this project will be a senior living community, minimum age of 62 years. There will be up to 26 structures. All units will be one or two-story bedroom units, maximum residence of 105 people, and no resident exit entrance to Barnes Drive, which is behind the property there, unless their requirements, as we go through the planning and zoning process with the City Columbia.
And I'll just -- I just want to clarify it for you all. This evening, your item is a zoning map amendment. It's not a site plan approval. So if this were to go through Planning Commission and City Council and end up being approved and the zoning would change, because the project would have more than five dwelling units, it would be coming back to Planning Commission for the site plan, just so everybody's aware that this evening is not a site plan review component.
Any questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other guests who would like to speak about this?
You do have a number of people signed up.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Oliver. I'm the president of Pinehurst Community Neighborhood Council. We have been going through this now for a year and a half, two years, and it's been contentious at times. We felt like we've reached an agreement with TN, but there are still some in the neighborhood very concerned because we don't have covenants attached to the deeds. I have faith that they'll follow through in the memorandum of understanding, but I'm going to cede my floor to another board member as well as Chair of our Oversight Committee that has put a lot of effort into getting this done. Because we came to this commission originally in 2008 and had it switched directly to single-family residential to protect the community from massive apartments going in there and that kind, because that side of Pinehurst Road is all single-family residential.
Good evening. I'm Rush Oliver and also a member of Pinehurst Community. And we had a community meeting on 2nd of February this year, and I proposed a motion that we authorize a letter from Pinehurst Development Council to TN -- I mean Neighborhood Council to TN Development Corporation in support of their request for a zoning change from RS1 to RG2 for the senior living facility. And the letter is -- was to be contingent based on the written text of the motion on the agreement of TN Development Corporation to bind itself through legal covenants that ensure the five points that were just presented. Senior living community, 26 structures maximum, one or two-bedroom units, maximum number of residents, 105, and that no residential entrance or exit to Barnes Drive. The last sentence, covenants must be legally attached to all deeds of property associated with the development, openly acknowledged by TN Development Corporation, and be legally compelling to TN Development Corporation during all subsequent planning, design, construction, and management processes. And we submitted this motion to TN Development, and it's our understanding they're still in possession of it. And I don't know how appropriate it is, but I would like for TN Development Corporation, their representatives, at this instance, to make a statement as why covenants are not currently in place, since that was clearly the mechanism. There is an MOU, there is an executive letter, and there are multiple meetings, including community meetings. But the community asks for covenants to be attached to the deeds. Is it appropriate to ask that question here and now? Can I ask a representative of TN Corporation to respond to that, or is that...
The dialogue certainly is one that's between the Commission and the public. Now, if that's a question that you would like to hear all the public comment, then maybe the applicant could come back up and address any concerns.
We can bring the applicant back up after that, yes. And the time is up now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
This is a zoning request. Obviously, we can't, as a Commission, require any type of conditions that are put to the zoning request, and I'm not suggesting that the MOU and these things aren't important. When it ultimately comes to our decision, it's simply a zoning request, correct?
Correct. It's just a -- it's essentially a zoning map amendment. So there's that table that's at the end of your packet. It shows you what's currently allowed and what would be the future allowed uses. That's how you should make your decision from that perspective. With regard to the conditions that the neighborhood requested and the deed restrictions, that is a private matter between the neighborhood and the Development Corporation. That's not something that Planning Commission or Council would be able to place on that. That'd be contractual zoning, which isn't...
I don't think we want to get into the debate between the neighborhood and the developer.
That was part of the reason I posed the question.
But for clarification, yes, that's -- yeah, you would... Your decision this evening is a little bit more clear-cut, I guess.
Ours is based on whether we want to change the zoning designation tonight.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Ronald Taylor. I'm here designated to represent the Pinehurst Neighborhood Association in this hearing matter. This afternoon, I want to give you a pass out because, like I said, there has been a lot of work done here, and I want you to have something to read or something to look at after, you know, before you make your decision as far as timeline. Thank you, Brenda. Again, TNN approached us about rezoning this precinct property on Pinehurst Road. They did give us a proposal. In the first part of our booklet, we had the proposal, and TN did give community input. They introduced us to a design team, which Anthony is here this evening, and we had concerns. But they did say that they, first of all, lowered the density, which means that they have a maximum of 52 units and 105 people. They gave us a concept of senior living, because Pinehurst has a real challenge with gangs, and we didn't want any housing, affordable housing, that may include younger people or potential gang members. So when they presented us the senior living concept, we were real happy about that. We went right on board for that. They also said that there'd be garden sale units made of brick and hardy plank. They would provide green spaces as well as security. Like I said, this has been an ongoing thing. Like I said, they did a great job with design as far as coming out and giving the neighborhood what they want, and that's what our neighborhood voted on, their proposal. Now, in Section 2 of this booklet, I have the work. Now, basically, the work has been a timeline of how many times we've gone back and forth as far as resolving the problems or what we wanted for our community as well as what the Planning Commission wanted for their project. So we went back and forth, but bottom line is here in the timeline, but they did give us a MOU, a memorandum of understanding. But from Dr. Oliver's talk, the first thing they presented us was a motion of action. And bottom line is that we asked them to -- and they were right on board. They did what they said they would want to do, but we wanted them to be binding and legal, and we asked them to put them in forms of covenants. And we've not received the covenants. But like I said, we've gone back and forth, and they said, in fact, I met with Mr. Mike Strange last week, and he said, Ronald, the covenants are forthcoming, but I'm here representing my neighborhood, and they gave me the power to do what they -- what we've been told as a representative. Then representative said, Ronald, we don't want anything done until we get the covenants in place. But like I said, we've been meeting with TN and Two Knots Road Development, and as a result, when we met down, we had this memorandum in place. We, my representative, our president, Neighborhood Association, Brenda Oliver, on March 7th, wrote Mrs. Strange a letter saying, we'll be happy to go on board as long as you follow or do what you say you want to do. And that was the result of all the back and forth during the first quarter of this year. But then we come down to opposition.
The time is up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but it's been time.
Sorry.
Thank you.
But you do have the opposition in your booklet. Thank you.
John, for some reason, I -- is there anything in here that shows the different RS2 uses? RG2 uses?
Uh, it should be at the back of...
I don't have...
I don't know if it's in the PowerPoint.
I didn't know if our PowerPoint had it.
It is in the PowerPoint. So the table of permitted uses in RS1, so you have on one side, you have what's the current zoning is, that's currently zoned RS2. They're proposing RG2. So you can compare what are the permitted uses versus in the RG2. There's a slight difference. There's more larger multifamily and group developments, and then you can actually see special exceptions by the zoning board of appeals and things like that vary between the two districts.
Are there any other guests who would like to come forward? Does the Commission have any other questions?
Does TN Development own the property now, or are they just contracted? Do you own the property now?
This would come back for site plan approval also.
Yes, it would come back for site plan approval at some point after the property's rezoned.
Does this letter of understanding have any bearing on approval of that site plan or not approving that site plan?
No, I mean, that memorandum of understanding, again, it would be -- it's between two private parties, so it has no bearing on Planning Commission or City Council's approval. So when you get the site plan, it's going to be a review by Planning Commission. It's going to be a technical review. So you're looking at it to make sure that it complies with city standards, ordinances, those types of things.
All right, if there's no other further questions or discussion, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the request to rezone the parcel from single-family residential district RS2 to general residential district RG2.
Suck it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next item.
They have to switch the slides. They'll have to switch the slides. Oh, that was quick. Your next item is a comprehensive plan map amendment for the South Main Capitol District Plan. It is a request to adopt the South Capitol Main Plan as an addendum to the comprehensive plan for the city. This particular plan, I'll go through it really -- a short presentation for you. The area, the study area for the plan consists of essentially eight city blocks that are due south of the State House. Basically, the boundaries are Pendleton on the north, Blossom on the south, and Sumter on the east, and Assembly on the west. The current zoning land use for the area consists of the Special District 3 and Special District 5, and the zoning varies from C1, C4, PUD, and some C3. Sorry, no C3. Yeah, a little bit of C3 there. Sorry about that. The planning process occurred in the fall of -- started in the fall of 2016. We had public outreach and development of the plan from October through January. The drafting, final drafting of the plan was the spring, and then the city staff received it just about probably three, four weeks ago. Public outreach consisted of public meetings on the 5th of October, the 16th of November, and January 17th. It consisted of property owners, tenants, state of South Carolina representatives, as well as university representatives. We averaged plus or minus about 20 people or so per meeting, and given it's a small little eight-area part of downtown, that was a fairly good turnout. As you can see, the study area, it is between the main campus of USC. It's also between Innavista, which is towards the river, the State House, and the Central Business District to the north. So it is sort of right in the middle of a lot of various activities within the city and within about a 10-minute walk of most of the major components of downtown. The plan goes through a number of components in terms of -- goes through a little bit of history, some existing conditions, so it does talk about some of the historic qualities of the area and adjacent to it, including USC and the State House. The plan also talks about property ownership. In this slide on the screen, you can see the various ownerships consisting of state, USC, private properties, as well as some utilities that are owned, own property within the area. And apparently, we have an error on that page for some reason. Okay. Oh, no. That's an error that I can't get past. Okay. We'll improvise. Hopefully, they'll be fixing it in the back room. Okay, we'll start with that. We'll go to that slide. So there is a long-range vision for the particular plan. This is, like most plans, they go over a long period of time. Plans are contingent upon funding sources, the economy, developers' interest, all sorts of things. And so you see in this particular long-range vision, I do want to make a note, and there was concerns at the very -- at the second public meeting when the planning consultant presented some drawings, and so it was a lot of concern. They kind of showed like this kind of full build-out, and there was a concern that they -- the conceptual drawings looked like lots of large projects, and they didn't acknowledge a lot of the existing conditions. And so for the third public meeting, they came back showing a lot more contextual sensitivity as well as showing some existing buildings remaining, that type of thing. But the key components of this, I just want to point out, consist of, for the northern four blocks, it would be mixed development. So you have residential, office, first-floor spaces that are active, parking garages that are in the core of the blocks, very similar to the Innavista concepts, and then infill buildings on other blocks, as you can see. And so it is, it's a depiction of potential. It doesn't necessarily mean those are the shapes or exact configurations of buildings. They're more just kind of placeholders or components. The idea is to have a mixed-use, active area in that particular part of Main Street, and this picture just kind of depicts that kind of vision from a street perspective. And the plan goes in, and it goes a little bit more in detail, and it talks about a lot of things about the infrastructure of the area. There is funding in place for some infrastructure changes in this particular area. So item number 4 on the slide is a transit block, which where the buses for USC, Comet, other types of those -- the buses for the different housing developments would all go. And so you have a variety of elements there. Main Street, actually, is a road diet, which we'll show you in a slide coming up. So this is the existing conditions. It's a four-lane road with a meeting, with a turn lane down the middle and parking. And the concept of the plan going forward would be two travel lanes, parking lanes, two alleys of trees, bicycle, cycle tracks, sidewalks, and then an incursion area or an area that can have outdoor dining or other types of activity. And the plan goes through, and it looks at cross-sections farther south on Main Street, which has some variations, as well as Green Street and Divine. And then this is an example on College, where you would have a lot of the transit components for the area. And then this is also Green Street by where the law school is currently, and then a cross-section for Divine down on the southern part of the area. And then the plan does talk a lot about public realm and public space and connecting existing public spaces to future public spaces. This is another example, the long-range vision conceptual drawing. And then the plan goes into specifications in terms of recommendations, and these recommendations are part of the plan that would not necessarily -- they're not necessarily binding by adoption of this plan, but their recommendations... of this plan, but they're recommendations that city standards would need to be changed. So for instance, the plan recommends six, two-to-six-story buildings on some of those blocks under the current zoning that would be allowed. In other blocks, you could actually build a building taller than six stories. So we would have to have modifications to the zoning code to implement this particular plan. And similarly to a lot of the recommendations, there may be various policies, et cetera, that would need to be changed after the plan has been adopted as council seeks it to change those policies.
We're, we're tonight just reviewing, as to make this an addendum to the plan, to the City of Columbia's comprehensive plan, right?
Correct.
So I, they've done a good job. I, I have only, my, my only concern is some of the traffic issues that I think will be addressed with the city engineer, about the turning lanes, items like that. I don't know if y'all have gone through this. I mean, it's, compared to what we have, it's, it's been done very well. Any other, any questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant, if they're here?
Well, the city's the applicant.
The city's the applicant.
But there are people, there are people in the audience that, there are different people who attended the public meetings in the audience that might want to say something.
Are there any guests who would like to talk about this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Derek Huggins, Vice President for Facilities and Transportation at University of South Carolina. I just wanted to come up and tell you how privileged we have been working closely with Mr. Fellows and Krista and Brian to make this happen, with their coordination and all. We were able to put several entities together, the Council of Governments, the State House delegation, City House Administration, USC, SC DOT, to make this project come to where it is now. So I just wanted to come up and tell you thank you, and thank you for the staff.
Thank you. Are there any other guests who would like to speak tonight?
My name is Mary Marasovich, and I'm the owner of Cool Beans Coffee Company, which is located on College Street, two buildings down from USC's horseshoe. We've been there for 19 years. And while I generally like the idea of the improved streetscaping, I do have concerns because the long-term plans do show the elimination of our building, as well as many others in the area. And I would argue that we serve as an important function to the university to provide character and to make this area unique. Again, we have been there for 19 years, and we are often one of the first stops of families coming to tour USC. And they come in, and they're greeted by our friendly staff and our amazing coffee, and they can even taste grits for the first time in their lives, which is exciting for people to have that character. Folks are excited to come in and find that Columbia has a vibrant local businesses, and by removing these businesses and buildings, it'll reduce the area to a much more generic feel and really lose that soul of the university feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm John Sheer, Director of Cultural Resources for Historic Columbia. I'll be speaking this evening on behalf of Robin Waits, Historic Columbia's Executive Director, and Dr. Lydia Brandt, who is a member of Historic Columbia's Historic Preservation Committee. As you may know, and you probably do, Historic Columbia is a proponent of smart growth, informed planning, and the integration of historic structures into future development. With this in mind, let me speak on behalf of Dr. Brandt, who offered a few words regarding concerns all three of us have regarding a facet of the proposed South Main Capitol District Plan. While we are thrilled to see this part of Columbia and the USC campus considered for comprehensive redevelopment, we are concerned that the narrow understanding of architectural history in the South Main Capitol District Plan sets a troubling precedent for the preservation of the city's architectural fabric. The plan limits the use of words like authentic and unique to the 19th-century horseshoe and the low-commercial structures on Main Street. It ignores the period that constituted the city's most significant construction period and produced its most iconic buildings, the mid-20th century. This is when Columbia finally became a modern capital city and USC a modern university, and these blocks are packed with examples of architecture from the 1940s through the 1970s. They include the Burns Building slated for demolition in the master plan as we see it, and the Cornell Arms also called for demolition in this plan. Both of these were designed by the same firm, Lyles Bisset Carlisle Wolf, and they are most likely eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places at the state, if not certainly the local level. LBNC, LBC&amp;W designed these buildings as hinges to link town and gown, urban and suburban scales. They designed them to connect to other buildings. They also designed downtown, on the State House grounds, and on the campus. And we might not recognize them today as contextual for a past we want to see, but they are part of our history nonetheless. If the plan's building design controls dismiss the 20th-century building stock as a historic, we miss an opportunity for a property representational story, a properly representational story of Columbia's development. So we're not here to argue for the preservation of specific buildings in this plan, but rather to urge discussion of the precedent of regarding mid-century buildings as a contextual or inauthentic. Columbia is in dire need of an evaluation of its mid-century architectural resources, and by erasing this significant chapter in Columbia's architectural heritage, we would be choosing selective amnesia over historical inclusivity. That being said, we commend the plan for its recommendation of further study. That is good, but as it currently reads, what has been deemed authentic is already apparently in print. So we just want to make sure that when we look at our finite cultural resources, we're looking beyond that which is kind of the go-to, the easy, the 19th century, and looking toward inclusion of things that have, happened in the recent past.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other guests who would like to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'll be very brief. My name is Dan DiAlberto. I am an attorney in town that worked with the planning group that put the document together, kind of coordinating everybody involved and making sure everybody showed up in the meetings and that sort of thing. And I just wanted to respond to the historic questions that were just brought up. As part of the process, Ms. Waits from Historic Columbia was involved, and as a result of her discussions with everybody who was involved in the planning process, we added a footnote, as you will see, I think it's on page 57, and again, on page, excuse me, page 52 and page 37, that discusses those concerns. And specifically, it essentially says that there is no particular plan to demolish a particular building. This is a, an area plan that essentially discusses a long-range vision, but no plan in particular for any particular building. And so as to the Cool Beans Building, for instance, although it is shown on that, on that long-range vision as gone, obviously, that's going to be a discussion between the property owner and whoever's the eventual purchaser of that property, if any, at some point in the future. All this long-range vision page is meant to show is a plan that is generally consistent with what the planning process heard, the planners heard during the process. And so any particular building that is discussed or shown or otherwise absent or included in these, in these long-range visions, there's no plan for them by any stretch of the imagination. It's just a general vision for the area, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and that was discussed throughout the process. Thank you.
Are there any other guests who would like to come forward? If not, I'd like to call for a motion. Sure.
Well, the plan is a policy document that's supposed to guide future policy. So if the plan is adopted by council and they, let's just say, we can take two ends of this, of the spectrum. So they could go through this and say, okay, what are all the things that we need to do to be able to implement this plan, and let's get all those policies in place. So all those policies could go in place, or it might be they just want to do one or two things, and not all of them, from a policy perspective. And so when Cool Beans were to come in and to renovate, they would be, either way, they would have to comply with the building codes. That would be a standard given for, for anything. And then in terms of, I think the question becomes, if they're, if they're remodeling internally, I don't think any of the policies that are recommended in here, if they were to go forward, would actually affect them. I think the policies that are in here that would affect them is if they decided that they wanted to remove the entire building and build a bigger, larger-type facility, and then whatever those future policies are that would be adopted, they would need to be compliant with those. It could, and, I mean, it, I mean, just to use Cool Beans as an example, it might, it might be that properties around it are redeveloped by the current property owners. They could change hands and be redeveloped, and Cool Beans could be there for another 20 or 50 years, and all of that might happen around them, and they'll still be there in that particular situation, assuming ownership and tenants stay the same. So, and I think that scenario, we're using Cool Beans, but that scenario goes for, you know, any property, and that's pretty much the same answer anywhere, kind of, you know, from that perspective, so.
Any other questions for staff?
There are, on your staff summary, there are, I think, a couple recommendations we had, so in terms of.
Read that.
Changes to the document. One is the.
The incursion zone.
The incursion zone, but we have other documents that use a different term, and just to be consistent, we'd like to be able to not have two different terms floating around out there. And there's some other sort of things that are just modifications to either wording or diagrams in there, so. If you wanted to just approve with those as conditions, that'd be fine.
Well, I guess we'd have to have a motion with staff recommendations.
If, if that's what you chose.
Okay. All right, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to approve the comprehensive plan amendment with staff comments to adopt the South Main Capitol District Plan as an addendum to the City of Columbia's comprehensive plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Just a reminder, our regular Planning Commission meeting will not be at our standard time due to the Fourth of July holiday, so we will not be meeting the first week of July. We'll be meeting the second Monday of July, just so if you have a automatic thing on your calendar, just move that forward.
And also, as we discussed earlier, all motions in the future will be set, will be made to be approved, and if they're denied, it will, it will state that. As we learned today, we've been doing it, approving them or denying them, but the motions will be made for approval. And if everyone approves it, fine, and if they don't, it'll be turned down. Just a new format.
And staff will.
Maybe, yeah.
We'll talk about it next time.
We'll get, we'll get up on that.
Do they want to keep these, John?
If you make a motion for approval.
You know, if you want to, if you don't want to keep those, if you want to put them back on the counter, we can get them back to the applicant so they can reuse them if they want.
If there's no other business, then I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Holders back.
I'll just leave it here.
I guess we'll turn it here.